Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. We could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Leeny? Commissioner Leeny?
Here.
Vice Chair Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Chair Staffordson?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Okay, and with that, I would like everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance and Commissioner Leeny will be leaving this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Those in chambers, no? And anyone online wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. And I'd like to make a couple agenda updates. If it pleases the commission. I'd like to move the Mark 13 meeting minutes to the next meeting, just so that we can make a change to that. That would be the first one, and then, and I'll bring this up later, but the discussion on use tables, I'd like to move that one as well. Everyone okay with that?
Sure.
I know it gets you out of here earlier, and I know you're not into that. Okay, so with that, we will go into tonight's agenda items. And we have two hearings. Case file LU 0003-2024. And this is special variance, and case file 1575-15 Main Streets on Halsey, this is a type 4 hearing. And before we do that, I would like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedures we'll be following for tonight's agenda items for the public hearings. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council, who renders the final decision. Tonight, case file LU 0003-2024, the Planning Commission will be the deciding body for that decision this evening. And for case file 7515, Main Streets on Halsey, we will be making a recommendation to the city council, who will be rendering the final decision. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with organ law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff present their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And if you're testifying this evening, we ask that you speak clearly for the record and state your name and address for the record. And before we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask if, other than casually driving by the site, does anyone have any conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias that they would like to declare this evening?
I question how objective I can be. Two reasons. One is I was an opponent of the development being made in the first place, vocal about it. And two, I usually have something to say about that development anytime I drive through it, last time meeting this morning.
Okay, so you don't feel you could rule?
I don't think I can be objective on this one, out of this frame of mind, point of time.
Okay. All right. Any, okay. Any other challenges to that? Anyone else? Commissioner Wilcox?
Is my mic on green or?
Green's on.
Green's on, okay. I've been advised to recuse myself because my wife was the person that reported the questionable addition to the city, brought it to their attention.
Okay. Okay, and that's your... That's what you're planning to do?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any issues with that?
I think he's got better reason than I do.
He does. All right. So with that, with each one of you that are recusing yourself, you have full right to testify as a citizen before the Planning Commission this evening on this item. All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. With that, then, at this time, we will open the public hearing for case file LU 0003-2024, 1635 Southwest Hewitt Place. This is special variance. And I guess you guys just want to go sit down out there?
Yeah.
Step into the audience.
Okay, thank you. Get out. Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Chair Saverson. I'm going to pull up the presentation.
We have to fold. We have to fold. It's gonna be landslide.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dakota Meyer. I am the Associate Planner here at the city of Troutdale. I will be presenting the staff report for a proposed special variance for 1635 Southwest Hewitt Avenue under case file number LU-0003-2024. Background, a little bit of background on the site. The site is located within Morgan Meadows subdivision. It is zoned high-density residential, and all surrounding properties are also zoned high-density residential. Here is the street view of the developer, of the property. Here are the two site plans submitted by the applicant. The one on the left was the first site plan submitted. We keep the project incomplete in order to make sure we see the site plan and show the setbacks, as that's the primary purpose why we're here. Here are the elevations submitted by the applicant of the addition. There's a couple more photos within the public comments that was handed out as well. What is being proposed is a special variance to allow an addition located partially within the 15-foot rear yard setback of this property. The applicant intends to use the space as a study room and/or bedroom. What is not being proposed is an ease zone. Applicable criteria for this application is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Troutdale Development Code, Chapter 1, entry-level provisions, Chapter 2, Procedures for Decision-Making, Section 3.114 High Density Residential, Section 6.1300 Variants, and then Chapter 17 General Provisions, along with all applicable building codes, public works, facility standards, and relevant ORS and OAR rules. This is a type 3 quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial public hearing. Planning the, Planning Commission are the decision-making entity for all three applications. If there's an appeal, it will be appealed to the city council. On the right, you'll see a brief timeline showing the, how this came to be. It was first reported to us via complaint from Coke, Coke compliance, submitted on December 12th. The applicant submitted the application materials on January 23rd. The application was deemed incomplete on February 22nd. And then on March 15th, the application was deemed complete, with the notice of public hearing being sent on March 10th. ABC comments, the city received comments for both planning and building. No comments were received from Resurfire or Public Works. The city also received three public comments as of this weekend prior to the meeting. And you'll notice there at the bottom, there's an update to page 3 of the staff report. Page 3 has now been updated to reflect attachment A, which is the applicant's therapist that is submitted. All entities that responded suggest denial of this application. Next up is the decision criteria. Before I get into this, would you like me to read all of these? Or did you all read them previous? I'd be happy to do either one. It's up to you all. I know they're a little wordy and a little lengthy, so I wanted to check before I done it.
I read them.
Okay, you can, so.
So I won't go through the findings, but I will go through that. This decision criteria is from 6.1330 Special Variants. Criteria 1 is the unique nature, criteria A is the unique nature of the proposed development is such that the intent and the purpose of regulations and the provisions to be waived will not be violated. Staff finds this criterion is not met. Criteria B, authorization of the special variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare and will not be injurious to other property in the area when compared with the effects of development otherwise permitted. Staff finds this criterion is not met. Criteria C, application of the provision to be waived is unreasonable and unwarranted due to the specific nature of the proposed development. Staff finds this criterion is not met. Criteria D, special variance is not required for type 2 design adjustment. This criterion does not apply. Staff recommendation, the staff recommendation, staff recommends denial as out, staff offers the following recommendation for the conduct of the April 10th, 2024 public hearing regarding the proposed special variance for 1635 Southwest Hewitt Avenue. The staff recommend denial of case file LU-0003-2024.
Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Is the applicant present?
There's not anybody.
Okay. Let's do something really interesting. Okay, what we do have is, point you to this. Handout that we received this evening. If you look at the fourth page of the staff report, this is from the applicant, the narrative.
Correct.
Okay.
You'll notice that two narratives. He, I requested that he submit a separate narrative from what was on the application, as that's kind of for the application, where you do require a narrative separate as part of the supplemental requirements.
Okay. So this is basically what we have for, from the applicant in total, right?
And site plans that, and elevations that.
Oh, site plans, that's, okay. All right, so this is basically gonna be their testimony at this point. Okay? You want to have a chance? Well, I'm gonna give you a minute to read that.
Yeah, if I could, just a question.
Okay. At this time, are there any parties wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? Anyone online wishing to speak as a proponent? Go ahead and unmute yourself. Anyone online wishing to speak as an opponent? To the application? Anyone in chambers wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Come forwards.
Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Hey, let's get to it. You're right. I'm testifying as a private citizen and not a Planning Commission member. I'm also a resident of Morgan Meadows and received the notice of hearing. I first became aware of the addition at 1635 Southwest Hewitt Avenue while viewing Troutdale properties for sale on Realtor.com. We are particularly interested in what properties are selling for in Morgan Meadows since we are in the development. While viewing the photos of the Hewitt property, we saw that there were exterior and interior photos of an addition built over the concrete patio on the backside of the house, accessed via the sliding glass door. The exterior construction in particular didn't appear to be up to code, with no perimeter foundation, just rusting on piers on the ground since it extended beyond the edges of the patio. This was in early December 2023, so the house has been on the market for at least four months. Addition photos have since been removed from the listing, but there are text references to a 12-foot by 12-foot bonus or sunroom. It's been stated that the addition was completed in November 2023, and the applicant needs it for a study room. However, the house, however, the house has been listed for sale since at least December 2023, so that would be a no benefit if they're moving anyway. The Troutdale Building Division was contacted to find out if they were aware of this construction. They apparently were not. Some of the construction deficiencies are included in the Building Division report. Our initial concern was that if the addition has not been permitted and/or inspected, it could pose a fire hazard if not correctly wired for electricity. We had a neighborhood fire in December and saw how much damage can occur in just a few minutes. The smaller houses in Morgan Meadows, such as the Hewitt property, only have a total of three feet of separation side by side. And most of the smaller houses and many larger as well have 15-foot rear yard setbacks. Buyers expect the rear separation to be maintained, not encroached upon by house extensions. Morgan Meadows has an HOA which requires approval for exterior modifications, which was also not obtained. One more factor that staff and Planning Commission should be aware of is that, I saw just yesterday, that pending is posted on the real estate listing. I have no idea if the buyer is aware of the current unsettled situation. Question before the Planning Commission is the backyard setback variance, which is the range of, which is in the range of 40% to 50%. Has been very thoroughly addressed in the staff report, according to the criteria, and failed to meet any. Staff recommends denial of the variance, a decision I would fully support and encourage. I also fully support the Building Division requirement that the addition be demolished immediately if the variance is not granted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to testify to the application? Any neutral parties online wishing to testify this evening? Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing on LU 003-024, special variance.
Yeah, we have motion to second, close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay. Do you want them?
Got a question for Dakota.
Yes, sir.
So in here, it, where did you say? Oh, the distance between my addition and my surrounding neighbors hasn't changed from the adjacent side. There's still a large distance between my addition and the front neighbor, which, well, how about the back and the side neighbors? But is that true that it is not?
No, that is incorrect. It has, it has gotten closer to the neighbors to the rear and in the findings of fact, under... Three seconds.
A lot of gaps.
Under B, what did I see? I've, I've mentioned under B how the, the applicant, in the narrative submitted by the applicant, the applicant states the distance between the addition and the surrounding neighbors hasn't changed. This is found to be invalid. The resident now sits approximately nine feet from the rear property line and reduces the distance to the home directly to the west. So it actually took, if, this property is unique to Morgan Meadows in that the house has a smaller footprint, so he actually has a 20-foot setback, where most of the other houses within Morgan Meadows are built to the maximum with 15 feet. So there is room technically there, but he is encroaching into the setback by approximately six feet. Six feet, right?
Other questions for staff?
Are you?
You have any other questions for staff? Okay, other questions for staff? Okay. Can I do this step? I, I think it's, it's kind of a sad situation, but I'll just say this. He references a lot to the size of a lot, and the size of a lot is something that we don't take into consideration. There's lots that are 20,000 feet, 40,000 feet, and it doesn't enable you to just put up other structures. And also too, these things are a little more challenging when you've got a master plan development, because typically lots are smaller, and the setbacks are smaller, and the density's higher. So I just want to, it's kind of like we're comparing an apple to an orange here a little bit in some ways, and we just are not able to do that within the code that we have to uphold.
Typically, you do your life work at the construction, doing the construction too, and know what you're up against.
Well, also, he is under a, like, like one of, like Mr. Wilcox said, they're in a HOA, and they didn't even ask, because there's certain requirements in their HOA that they have to adhere to as well. And they didn't ask that either. So I don't know if they're really...
Yeah, and the HOA doesn't really play into us as much, but I think it would certainly could have prevented some asset, ant-acid purchases and some other things if some of these things were done. You know, you go to your HOA first.
Right.
Right.
And I would think the HOA, am I wrong? The HOA could actually ask it to be removed?
I couldn't tell you.
Right, I would think the HOA.
They, they could certainly deny a removal.
Right.
I don't think they have that. They'd have to go to court, I think, at that point.
Some HOAs have got a lot of moxie.
Do you want both findings of fact and final order in the same, or do you want?
It's a variance, so I think that we can do them the same, because we don't have to do, right? Is it a one motion?
You can do, you can do it in one motion.
Okay.
So it's just finding a fact and final order?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Prickett?
I move to deny the application, deny the findings of fact and final order for application of LU 003-2024, 1635 Southwest Hewitt Avenue, the type 3 variance.
So just, just a point of clarification. An affirmative vote would be that you are agreeing with the finding of fact and final order. Okay?
I was gonna ask you.
Yeah.
Denying it, or are we accepting it?
Denying it.
You are accepting the recommendation for denial, so a yes vote is accepting the recommendation that's put in front of you.
I'll sign it in.
Okay. We have a motion and a, by Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Leeny for finding a fact and final order denial for LU 0003-2024, 1635 Southwest Hewitt Place, type 3 special variance. Any discussion on the motion that we have? Okay. Let's see what we got, what we call.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Prickett?
Yes.
Chair Stapleton?
Yes. That passes.
So, after that, I have a question. So what happens now?
Now, the applicant, we will put together the notice of decision that it would define final facts, or findings of fact and final order to deny the application. Now that it's been denied, the applicant, or the applicant will require to remove the structure.
And he could still appeal?
There is a 10-day appeal period from the date of the notice of decision. If the applicant wishes to appeal to city council, they have the right to do so within those 10 days.
Stand by us.
Okay. Just a no. What happens if he sells the house?
So currently, this application is also, since it came through initially through code enforcement, the applicant has gone to court a couple times. It has been, the court has extended until we have this meeting to have a final decision. And then now the final decision has been rendered, the court will now, he must report to court on the 24th of this month in order for the judge to, if he does not remedy the issue, then the judge may require, may require to demolish it or wait until the appeals period. If he does not submit an appeal, then the judge will order him to remove the structure and then potentially impose a fine.
All right. At this time, we will move on to case file 75-15, Main Streets on Halsey. This is type 4, hearing for the Planning Commission making a recommendation to city council. And we will open the public hearing. He back up on this one too?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Yep, you give me twice. I have another presentation.
Mr. Meyer.
All right, thank you, Chair. Pull up the other presentation here.
All right. As mentioned before, my name is Dakota Meyer, the Associate Planner here at the city. I will be presenting the staff report for the proposed text amended, proposed text amendment to Chapter 3.2 Mixed Use Zoning Districts and Appendix A of the Troutdale Development Code under case file 7515. Here you'll see a zoning map. Now, I'm going to caveat this. Everything you'll be seeing and reading tonight is from, is as written in 2021 when the Main Streets on Halsey was first brought for work sessions, the planning commission. So we are either adopting as written or approving as written, denying as written, and so on and so forth, as they were written in 2021. So here, I caveat that, because here you'll see there's a couple of zones that are on the zoning map that are no longer within our code. So they've changed name. So here's a little bit of a background for you as well. In 2017, Metro awarded a 2040 Planning and Development Grant to the cities of Fairview, Wood Village, and Troutdale to engage with property owners and key opportunity sites to identify barriers to existing development codes and develop context-sensitive design standards to establish a more coherent form along the Halsey corridor. As part of the scope of work and deliverable package to Metro for the grant award, each city is required to review and consider the recommended code updates that were proposed as part of this project. There are two primary requests served in this application. The recommended code updates were, one, to amend maximum building heights, height regulations within Chapter 3.2. And the second request is to remove Appendix A and incorporate the design standards for the CBD, which is the Central Business District, now referenced as the MU1 Zone Mid Downtown Mixed Use within our code, and incorporate those design standards into the Halsey corridor. Sections, sections that are effective out of proposed amendments, Chapter 3 zoning districts. The changes are within the TDC Chapter 3, specifically TDC 3.200 Mixed Use Zoning District. The request there is to amend height limitations, dimensional, and design standards in the MU1, now 3.211, and MU2, 3.212 zones. And then also to remove Appendix A, remove Appendix A design standards for the Central Business District and incorporate those into 3.200 of the development code. Here's another map, kind of showing you a little bit more of how this would affect the downtown section along Halsey corridor. The green areas would remain at max 35 feet in height, where the purple and blue areas would allow for an increase in max height to 45 feet and 55 feet. So you'll see on the maps, it shows in each of the zones, in the MU1 and MU2 zone, how those height maximum, or the addition to the limit, or changing the limitations to increase the height maximums within those zones would affect the area. Here's a diagram showing how the CBD development design standards would be incorporated into the MU1 zone, so downtown mixed use along the Halsey corridor. Proposed findings. Proposed, these are the applicable criteria that will be used by both Planning Commission and City Council. The proposed change to development code does not conflict with applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. Staff finds this criterion is met. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. Staff finds this criterion is met. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro code. Staff finds this criterion is met. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change. Staff finds this criterion is not met. The change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of a community. Staff finds this criterion is met. Staff finds that use the criterion except for 6.1120D. Staff recommend, staff recommendation. Through several work sessions with the planning commission, staff finds the proposed amendments do not meet the needs of the city of Troutdale as written. Specifically, the proposed code amendments do not comply with Troutdale Development Code 6.1120D. Therefore, staff recommends denial of case file 7515, Main Streets on Halsey Development Code, and adopt the findings of noncompliance for TDC 6.1120D. The denial will also close out the Main Streets on Halsey grant at this time. Yet directed staff will continue to work on the planning, with the planning commission at future work sessions to come up with an alternative approach to implementing similar goals while preserving Troutdale's small-town characteristics. The recommendation for denial of case file 7515 and adoption of findings for noncompliance for TDC 6.1120D for city council consideration, intentionally scheduled for planning public hearings on May 7th and May 21st. Matters continue. The schedule above will be.
Couple of clarification questions if you don't mind. There was two work sessions or two meetings with the Planning Commission? The three-city Planning Commission, one in July of 2020 and one in March of 21?
That's what I was able to find during my research for this project. Trying to come up with the timeline, not being here for that long, was a bit difficult. So during research, digging through all planning commission hearings, there could, I could be slightly off with that timeline. I know there was also a planning commission during the, or a planning commission work session during the adoption of the amendment to change the names of the HO/N and the CBD to MU1 and MU2 and create MU3. So I know there's also a work session that happened here, or that meeting as well.
I don't believe that was, I don't believe that was three cities.
No, the first couple were three cities. There's two of the three cities that I understand from the memos and history.
Okay. All right, I'm old. I just don't call a second one. And I'm, what? We did virtually.
Yeah.
And, hang on, I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to get the
There's a lot in here at the time, so questions and comments.
We had a, we had a three-city work session. And the reason I'm asking is if there was an official meeting, what was the direction from that meeting to council or to the other planning commissions at that time?
I believe from what I reviewed is those were more work sessions, work sessions going through the recommended code amendments by, from Cascadia Partners. And the direction was for each planning commission to then have their own work sessions discussing those amendments. I don't believe there is any sort of direction, because at that point it was then divvied out to each of the three cities to then figure out how they're going to adopt the recommended code amendments.
So there wasn't an official recommendation to council from the Planning Commission to approve or deny the code in 20 or 21?
No.
You are correct. There is, there is, there is no recommendation from Planning Commission in 2021 on these, on this code amendment package. There was
Or 20.
Or 20.
And did council hear in 2020 and 21?
No.
No.
Just 20.
Just planning.
Did council hear in 2020 and in 21?
I don't believe council has heard these at all from my research.
Okay.
I don't think they made a recommendation.
No, but I
They might, they might have had a present, they might have had a presentation, but they didn't get a formal recommendation from the commission.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the code amendments were presented to council, I believe, in 2020. And it may have been 2021 or, I'm just trying to get my head around it.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
You are, you're correct, Annie.
Because it was kind of, the reason I bring it up was kind of confusing at the time. And I just want to make sure that I understand and everybody kind of understands the path that we kind of went down. Okay, so with that getting answered, and I apologize for that, questions for staff? Commissioner Allen.
So the property between Halsey Street and North Columbia River Highway, that's currently a gas station. They were recommending 45 feet. I take that that's for some future development because the gas station doesn't plan to go ahead.
That is considered an opportunity site that was found during the research done by Cascadia Partners.
Okay, and the property across Columbia River Highway from that, that also borders Northwest Graham Road, also we noticed, to 57th Drive. That's got quite a bit of setback. Do you know anything about that setback? Is that really required?
That setback, I believe
That's not us, that's county or something.
County owns that, and I know that's part of a larger streetscape upgrade for the entire Halsey corridor, is why they've had that for years. And now they're working through the process of updating the streetscapes all along Halsey corridor, all the way through, from here, from East County and all the way down to downtown.
Can we expect a change to that?
I am not aware. I can't speak to that, so I'm not sure.
And then, I was on council at the time that we allowed this property to go closer to the rear, which is where the railroad track is. But I don't know how settled that land is. If they do build to 45 feet, would it be considerations taken to making sure it has a firm foundation?
Yeah, that would be, that would be required.
Would that be to the bedrock or would that be to?
That would be a better question for our public morgues and building. They are, they have to follow current building standards of today to make sure that it's on proper foundation. More than likely, that would be bedrock with, I'm not sure how deep, but how deep footing it is in.
Yeah, and they do soil tests here.
Yeah, soil tests are required.
Okay, I think I have one more on this particular subject. 45 feet, that requires a more expensive fire truck. Does that take into any consideration that we would have to support fire services that could handle such a tall building?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe how fire would handle that would be requiring sprinklers, if anything, over here.
Okay, and how would they approach it trying to contain a fire from the railroad side?
I'm unaware of that.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions before we hear from the consultants? Commissioner Wilcox?
I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Allen's reference to fire service. You're allowing 75 feet in the confluence, so you're gonna, you're gonna need a ladder truck.
Kind of makes it mute, that's a good point.
Okay, and so, is Cascadia?
I don't believe they're interested.
Okay. Nevermind that, you guys can read more. You have any questions?
No, no questions. I remember previous discussions, I read through everything, and it makes sense as far as the findings of fact go regarding Section D in relation to the town center plan and everything we laid out. I know the biggest concern, I think, I remember being discussed, was obviously visibility of the bluff, you know, anything blocking kind of the natural feel of it and kind of going against what we were trying to develop as an aesthetic for the downtown environment, so it makes us leave.
I'm okay too. Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
My only thing is if you're opposing 45 feet to retain your small-town feel, you're gonna lose your small-town feel in the confluence if you're going 75 feet. So I think that's kind of a weak, pretty weak argument.
Well, you're going 55 feet in the confluence with the potential to go 75.
Right. With the lower elevation as well.
Yeah, it's lower. It's not as, it's not even stupid.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, it's like comparing Main Street Gresham to Civic Drive Gresham. It's a both Gresham.
Also, when it comes to the code in particular though, it's a separate zone, is that correct? When it comes to the requirements, right?
Right, confluence. Right, Confluence is.
It's not a separate zone.
When it comes to MC dash one.
Yeah, there's an overlay, but it's not its own zone.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I guess that's what I'm sorry, overlay.
Overlay, yes.
Yeah, different overlay when it comes to the overlay types.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
So I would like to say that I agree with Commissioner Andrews' comment that when you read through this and you're trying to envision how it's gonna look and how it's gonna feel and how are people gonna walk past residential to get to the next commercial establishment that they may want to be getting to, especially in our kind of weather. This is aesthetically and functionally even work or good downtown extension. I'm not so sure.
Did you want to make a comment or are you, you okay?
I'm not listening.
You're just having more fun listening, okay.
I'm listening.
Okay, oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So since this is going up the ladder, I just want to make a couple of comments kind of for the record. Is, so we look at this and. But in one of the maps, Figure 1, and this is gonna be page 1-61. If you look at it, it shows, there's kind of a green and it shows maximum height 35 feet. And I believe up towards the top of the map, that property is the Confluence and that's not 35 feet, that's 55 feet.
The Confluence is on the other side of the railroad.
Yeah, but if you look at the map.
So we're looking at this one.
So is this.
That shows this with the outlets in the Confluence out above, yeah.
Yeah.
1-61.
You concur, Commissioner Allen? This is behind the Outlook Mall.
I'm saved. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so like another one, if I'm looking at page 1-63, small-scale commercial spaces. And we have to have a minimum of three tenant spaces that are no greater than 800 square feet of floor area. And you get credit for doing that. And I guess my question would be, how do we know that somebody needs 800 feet of space? Typically, in a mixed-use development, you've got a flex space and you put demising walls in based on the needs of the tenants that are going into the spaces. So if I have spaces that are, are 800 feet, so I'm assuming when I build the building that they're gonna be 800 feet spaces and I have a tenant that needs 1,000 spaces, they go someplace else because they can't fit. Or if I have a tenant that needs 500 feet and I have 800 feet, they only rent 500 feet and I'm stuck with 300 feet. So I'm just wondering why we're going to that degree of detail and demanding that. I'm, I'm not like checking that that's, really makes a lot of sense. That's really gonna get you a good positive outcome. Now, another thing is if you go down to the next one, you know, if you build affordable housing, the city must ensure that affordable dwelling units will remain affordable and have a covenant or agreement for 30 years. It's a long time. Lot happens in 30 years. And I know those things happen, but that's, it's really kind of tall. We're not building, it's not the government building housing. It's the private sector building housing, right? To a different standard. And then just some little things that, I guess I'll say I would have expected a little bit better from Cascadia. We have a reference to parking standards, right? And they're talking about Chapter 11. We don't have a Chapter 11. We didn't have a Chapter 11, I don't think, for parking standards, even when this was done before. And there's a few things like that. I know they're working for three cities, but it would just be nice if everything was all kind of tidy, especially when this is getting marched all the way up to the council without any, I think, further action being taken on this before it goes up there. And I'll just say, you know, when it went to council before, it was kind of led to council like, hey, planning seen this. Not like planning saw this and their heads spun off or anything, or they were pretty upset, but planning saw this and now you're getting. I think it kind of left the impression, I know with some counselors here, that we were proponents of it, the way it was presented. And we probably would have been more proponents if some of our concerns had been addressed. I'm not totally sure why that was the way that it was, but I mean, it could be the way the grant was done, it could be the three-city thing, it could be a number of things. And then another one is you get a bonus, right? You can get a height bonus. But it appears that I can get, I can do some things and I can go up, get another 10 feet, which would enable me to build another layer of residential. And at the same time, my parking requirement goes down to .75 per unit. So I'm building more units.
And getting less parking.
And providing actually less parking. And so it's kind of like if we have a parking issue, we're actually kind of making, we're incentivizing someone to make the problem a little bit worse than what it is today.
Are we talking about CFA or?
This.
I know.
Yeah, but you, you see, it's like.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And I just, you know, if we're, I always feel that if we're doing bonuses for things, it should be like, hey, we want this and we're gonna let you do this if you do this for us. Am I wrong with that? You know, it should be more of a thing where if the city says, hey, we really want a park or something, you put in a park for us, we're gonna let you build tall or whatever. You're, we're gonna let you do something because we're getting something out of it. I'm just not seeing where the city's getting a tangible benefit that we can take to the community. Another one that I did not understand, and I know I'm bouncing around and I don't mean to do this to you, Dakota, but like exterior lights, I think, could not be very tall, number one, which was pretty surprising, and they could not be visible from the property line. Exterior building lighting. Not sure how you could do that. And if we did do that, would that really be, would that be a consistent with us providing safety for the community? If we're limiting the exterior lighting for security purposes, somebody can have on a building, we. And so I just wonder if that criteria is, I know it's a, an off one, but I just wonder if that criteria is fully met if we're limiting what someone can do for a security standpoint. With that said, I, I think there's also some good stuff in here.
Yeah.
Okay? That I think we as a city, well, depending on what happens tonight, but we as a city should look through this and say, hey, these are some really good ideas. We need to implement them, we need to make this part of our fabric and move forward because there's some stuff in here frankly that, eh, pretty good idea? Wish I would have thought of it, never did.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
I've been following you right along there and I'm in agreement with what you're saying. I'm really struggling with how this turns out to be any kind of desirable decent involvement in the end. I'm very concerned about it. So if you're seeing some positives that you are feel willing to mention them, I'd be happy to hear it.
I guess what I'm saying is, I struggle with this when I look at it as a biscuit, the whole thing. I look at it and it's like I, I, I struggle to get behind it because of what it is, but then there's pieces of it that I'm like, because I think with anything, you can try to find the diamond in the rough. And when I look through this, there are some things where I'm like, that's a good idea, we can make that work. Some of these are, some of the building orientations, some of the facades, some of the breaks, you know, so you don't have a long.
Long flat wall.
Yeah, long of a structure. And I'm just saying those, some of the design standards.
Well, like a plaza on the corner, when it's a corner building, have a little plaza type for sitting and that kind of thing.
There's some things in here that I think are positive and could be implemented and Troutdale could be better for it. But I think when you lump it all together, or at least for me, that's a tough one.
Sure.
Yes.
On that note, if I recall correctly, I believe members of TCAB were talking about a, developing a design standard, so maybe again, kind of putting that on the table and having them work it.
Yeah.
In order to represent something that, which might be a viable option.
Absolutely, and I know staff has mentioned before, can you guys get some design standards? You know, make our job a lot easier. And that's something that we haven't done, that we, is on the list and we need to do. And this could help facilitate that action.
I like Commissioner Andrews' statement there. Could pursue that.
Absolutely. I didn't mean to look at you.
That's the chair. This is the chair of TCAB.
I didn't say it, I was just. So, I mean, and those are just some things that I noticed and I won't go through the whole list because, you know, we only got like another four hours and today's over. But does anybody else have any comments? Before you. This has been kind of bounced around for a while. That's kind of, you know, where, where I'm at. There's some things that personally I'm in favor of and personally I'm not. And when I look at trying to implement it with the code that we have, I see some areas where we can move forward and others. I, I wish it was, I guess I'll say, a more collaborative effort. And sometimes when you do three-city things, it's hard, but I think this is one where collectively we just didn't do as well as we should have for the citizens. Just an opinion. Anything? I know you weren't here.
I know. I wasn't here, but what I am hearing from the Planning Commission tonight through your comments is that you would like staff to go back through these amendments and work with the commission during some work sessions and also TCAB too, to get to a, a package of amendments that we like for the Halsey Corridor that really meet the vision of the community. That's what I'm hearing, so.
We all agree.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to the suggestions.
Yeah.
We just want also, we just want a successful viable development.
Seems I've been hearing this is an all-or-nothing approval kind of deal, is that correct?
It is.
I like your idea of picking and choosing, but all or nothing.
I think that's what we wrote, what I, what I've written in there is that as a package right now of all or nothing, staff recommended it now because I think we can go back through this, we can close out the grant and then pick the things that we liked from this. Not everything, the things that, that.
I agree.
Not just TCAB or PC, but the citizens like and then staff will then work on code amendments off of those things that we liked about it and then write back. But right now, we have to go through an all-or-nothing package.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. And my, my comments frankly are more for the people that worked on this, the consultants and our council so that, you know, they understand this is not where, we're just like, forget it. I think there's some bones here that we can work with, but I also think collectively, it may not work for us.
I would have to agree with you. I did notice that some of those things you had mentioned were positive in my mind.
Looks like you have another question, huh? Okay.
This kind of gives us a head start on what we need to look at.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it does.
It does. So I really appreciate all the comments that I heard tonight.
Right, I agree with everyone here about it. Something that gives us something to start with and then we can work it to make a R.
Okay, and so do we need to?
We need to make a formal recommendation.
Well, we probably need to, we need to close first, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'm.
So unless there's any testimony further. And none for the public? Because it's a type four.
Right.
We will close that portion of the hearing and then motion.
I move that we close the public hearing for case file number 7515 Main Street, Halsey. On Halsey, type four planning commission recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted, a public hearing is closed. All right. So with that.
We have a staff recommendation just on page six of six.
Yes, we're looking at here. We don't like it.
That's fine, you can modify it.
Page 20 of the packet, page six of six of the staff reports.
All right. So if someone's a proponent of it, of this, then of denial, do they wish to make that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Prickett.
I move that we deny case file number 7515 Main Street, Halsey. Streets on Halsey, type four planning commission recommendation for denial.
Okay.
Zach in a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Prickett, second by Commissioner Andrews recommending denial of case file 75-15 Main Streets on Halsey code amendments for council consideration. And so we are recommending denial and a recommendation to council will be for denial at their level. So a yes vote is you're in favor of denial. And a no vote is the package goes in for approval. All right. Questions on the motion?
Vice Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mimi?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
And Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Okay. Six to. That passes. All right.
Mr. Meyer?
Uh, so yeah, we're moving on to the section.
Wait a second. Before you do that, that was a lot of work.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so thank you. That was a lot of work.
And it was easy for me to understand.
That's great because Dakota and I weren't here during this process. And so I think Dakota really did an excellent job going back into the file and looking at the file history and trying to summarize everything that occurred. And what made it even a little bit more complicated, a lot of these discussions happened during COVID.
Yeah.
Totally.
Thank you all.
No, thank you.
I gotta send you getting the notes.
Just try to be thorough, really thorough and help everybody out, make it easy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here we go.
Here we go.
All right. My name is Erica Palmer. I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight, I'm gonna, we're gonna have a conversation about the climate-friendly equitable community rules. I know we've had two prior meetings about the rules that have come down from the state. We had one meeting in late February and one meeting last month in March and Evan Mandell, or Evan Manvell from Department of Conservation and Development, he was online with us and presented a great overview of all of the rules. And so really quickly, I just have a couple of slides here about the rules. What these rules, and what these rules do. They have different mandates for different types of uses. So here we know that there's no mandates for, or no parking mandates for affordable housing, residential units under seven hundred and fifty square feet, childcare facilities. And then no more than one parking space for multifamily developments as well. Within the rules, they have some best practices for parking. So, you know, cities under these rules, we can't require garages or carports. Lease or off-site parking can meet parking requirements. They can have that shared parking ability. And then we need to make, you know, easier standards for existing parking lots to, to convert into other uses. So those are some of the best, what the state is calling best practices for parking. And then we get into some of the options. And when Evan was here, well, he wasn't, when Evan was online, he presented these three options. And tonight, I want to go quickly over these options and then discuss, have a conversation with the commission here about what you would need from staff to make an informed decision on these three options. So how, how we, how you as a commissioner would like to move forward. So option number one would just, would be to repeal parking mandates throughout the city. And this is more of a market approach and letting the market drive, you know, how many parking spaces should be developed with new developments. And then we have option two, which is fair policies. And the city would need to implement at least two out of the five choices on this slide. And we've gone over these five choices before. And then we have option three, which the city would need to adopt the no parking mandates for the bulleted list on this slide. And then we would also need to come up with one unbundled parking option or one like parking district for the city, some type of mechanism that way. So next steps here, like I said, I am looking for additional information that staff can provide to the commission to help decide what option you would like to move forward with. Just a couple of bullets here on this slide. You know, I was thinking about what information we can provide you to help you make an informed decision and you know, we can, looking at option one per se, we can provide a map that shows all of the current vacant parcels in the city and what they're zoned. So you could see how many parcels option one would essentially affect. And staff for option two, you know, if we wanted to learn more about, you know, businesses and how many people take public transit on a daily basis, we can do, we can reach out to the businesses that employ more than fifty people and do a survey and and talk to those folks to figure out how many employees that would affect in these businesses that employ fifty or more people. Is there anything else? I mean, I'm just gonna throw this question out to the commission and have a bigger conversation of what, of what you would like to see. And maybe you can't think of anything now. And maybe you just need to sit with it, you know, for, we have a year. So we do, we do have time. We have until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five to make these code updates.
But we have to have something.
Erica got us the year.
Thank you, Erica.
Single-handedly.
Last year.
That was great news, yeah.
That was very nice of you.
I said that was great news. Yeah, well played. Yeah.
I think the state of Oregon.
I would say, you know, this is a type four, it's not a type three. So the limitations that are on us as far as who we can talk to, what we can say, what we can do are a little bit different. And I think that this, anytime you bring up the word parking, it's kind of a bomb around here, no matter what. And I think the best path for us forward, my opinion, is to engage the community as much as possible so they are heard, we hear what they, their concerns are, they understand what we're up against. And then maybe we can move forward. Just like the businesses with this paying people fifty dollars a month, you know, if they use transit and all that. I'd like to hear from them. What does that look like for you? How many people is that? What's it gonna cost you? You know, what, what's going on down there?
Well, yeah. And how many people actually use mass transit to get to work?
Three, no, I'm sorry.
You know what I mean? I mean, it, we don't, we don't have those numbers because, I mean, Portland probably has those kind of numbers because they use it a lot, but we don't have those numbers.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. You know, staff, we can reach out and try to gather that data for the commission.
Can we go back to the slide with the option, option two, especially?
So we only two out of the five, right?
Two out of the five, yes.
And we did confirm that we could technically choose one that doesn't actually
Exist.
have tangible
Right.
That is correct.
Consequences and
That is correct. And that's the tax on a commercial parking lot.
Right. And I know there's discussions about Glenada, but that city owns those, not even a concern either.
And I can tell you, looking through our business license applications, I can tell you that there's seventeen employers in Troutdale that employ fifty or more people.
Seventeen.
There could be a couple more than that. It probably not a lot. But yeah, that's very close. It is interesting, things like we're trying to reduce red tape, right? But then we say, oh, you've got to break out your parking separate on your leases and in your development and all of these things.
That's not making it.
It's kind of like, you know, we've traded something here, sure. But at the end of the day, you probably made more work than what you gained. Would you agree to him?
Yes, I do.
You know, I mean, breaking all that out and things is just an enormous task.
The thing is, is we're, we're trying to find the two that cause the least economic and environmental damage to our area.
Right.
I was, I was on vacation during the last two months of last month. I mean, the last two weeks of last month is what I meant to say. And I got to visit some areas that had some of these new design ideas. And what I found very interesting is that basically it was very difficult to find parking. And what you're doing is you're, I'd like to say you're driving around looking for parking, but you're basically sitting in a large parking lot in the street with a running vehicle, inching forward, trying to find a spot that you could park at, which does not seem to me to be climate friendly at all.
So you're driving an EV.
And so we're driving a, we're driving a hybrid with sixty miles per gallon, but still it doesn't seem to be, it seems to be climate unfriendly should really be the title. If people can't, if you can't quickly move traffic and park it and stop it from running.
There certainly is that side of it, you know?
Anti-intuitive. It's like we're trying to force people to not use the car because it's so inconvenient. But not everybody's young and healthy and has good genes and can walk in rain and do fine and walk uphill. So we're really trying to force something that's not actually happening.
I love your approach.
This is, this is Zach's one. I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at some of the other options here. The first one versus the second one, it comes to parking where it's separate from units. I just, I do wonder being in our location outside of town where most people do use vehicles to commute to work, if that would, if one, I guess, would be better than the other as far as having less of a chance of that being the case? If you think like that data would show that, again, kind of guided by the market, like nobody's in their right mind would necessarily make that call, you know, at this, in this like demographic. I'm, I, I do agree that I think it would be, I mean, it sounds like you already have a good launch point with seventeen, you know, kind of looking at the applications. We kind of know who we're working with to maybe get a little bit more data like Chair Stephenson was mentioning that you brought up. I think the more information we have to go on, the better, obviously. It looks like one out of the five already is kind of a good option. And then if we figure out something that has less of an impact day to day for everybody here, that'd be obviously the better choice.
Well, also make it more easier for applicant or whoever has to go through this. I mean, we're supposed to make it as easy as possible, but
Right. And that's what I said during my very first presentation is what's gonna have the least amount of impact to Troutdale residents.
So now did you say that we can do option number one and then one of option number three?
I have to go back because they changed, they changed the rules in November a, a little bit. I, I believe we just need to implement two out of the five. But I'm gonna, I'll go back and double check on that.
Two of these five?
Yes.
Yeah, two of these five.
And we're talking about one and four so far? Is that correct?
Uh, we were talking about four and possibly three or one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, right now I'm hearing one, three and four are the ones that we would like to look at.
Oh, what? Okay. But I'm thinking of, so this is option two.
Yes.
But then we have option one.
So option one, you wouldn't have to adopt. So you're looking at these three options that we have before you, option one, option two or option three. And then choosing which option you would like to move forward with. So for instance.
Okay, so if you can choose option one, then you don't have to do anything else.
Correct.
But you, option three, you have to choose.
In option three, we would have to
No mandates.
You have no mandates for the following types of uses.
Right.
And then we would also need to develop like a parking district or we would have to unbundle parking for residential.
I see, okay, okay.
And then option two is we need to implement at least two out of the five.
I agree with them.
Can you go back a slide?
Yes. Option three.
Right there. So no mandates. Schools, bars, small business. Where'd this list come from?
Yeah. Have they been at a school when they've had a, a function and there's no parking? You have to, they take a bus from another school usually. You have to park somewhere else. Because there's no, there isn't enough parking. Or they park in the neighborhood.
I mean, these rules came out of the rule committee through, through the state of Oregon. So I, I
What were they thinking?
So here we go again. The bomb's been set off.
Oh, I thought I was bad.
So what happens if the building's been vacant two years, gets a tenant?
I guess technically it would be an incentive, right, for somebody else to move into it.
Because you don't have to have any parking.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, you don't have to have a parking app.
And we can't charge you for parking.
Yeah.
But somehow we would charge for parking. Not the city.
Not the city.
The landlord.
Correct.
Because the other thing, the other question I had that I didn't get answered was, if you have a situation where parking's unbundled, what happens with parking that's not assigned? So like handicap parking, things like that.
Or EV parking.
Does that all go away? Because nobody's paying for it? Or general customer parking or things like that? So is that all gone?
So I had this conversation with Evan and so for example, I'm just going to use the Columbia Gorge Outlet Mall as an example because that is a a big area with lots of parking and shops. When Evan and I were talking about unbundling, you know, in a large commercial plaza, he was envisioning that if there is a tenant in a space, they could purchase the parking that's closest like to their entry or to their front facade. So they may rent, you know, four parking spaces and then those parking spaces are strictly designated for that store. And then the rest of the parking is just sort of like undesignedated, like anyone can park there. But, but the parking in front of the store, you know, is, is signed specifically, you know, that is specifically signed for that shop, for that retail shop.
So was this done ever successfully someplace?
You know, Evan provided some examples.
I know. West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Scattle, Albany, New York.
And I know there are I know there are places where they say they're marked that you cannot park here, but I don't think they paid for renting that space. But they put a sign up that says you can't park here between these hours because it's a business. And they're closed at a certain time so you can use their parking. But I've never, I don't know if they But I've never, I don't know if they actually paid extra for that.
I know this doesn't have anything to do with planning, but it's just like, you know, when we went through COVID and people were locked up, I should say, you know, stay at home and all those things. There were some residual societal effects that happened from that. And not all of them were positive. And it's kind of like, have we researched societal effects and economic effects from some of those decisions? Have we thought about some of those?
Through, through this, through the CPEC work or just through plan, or planning like generally?
Well, it's, okay, so, uh, so it's like, it's Christmas time and I'm at the outlet mall and I got four parking spots. And I want those four parking spots for my customers, but the store next to me, customers for them took two of the spots. What do I do with that? And I need eight spots and they're going to park in the other spots, but I don't own any of those. None of those are mine. I, you know, how, how does this whole thing work? And how, how are people in the real world supposed to implement this? Because those are the questions I get asked, is how am I supposed to do this?
Or what happens if somebody gets mad because they parked in there? And what do you do about it when they're parked in that?
No, I think those are fair questions and, uh, you know, speaking to the state about unbundled parking, they would leave that, those kinds of questions up. Or they would leave those types of questions between the renter and the.
Oh, oh, after-buck.
Tenant, yeah.
That would be very difficult to do.
Yeah.
But we'll probably hear some of that.
Commissioner, I was shocked to see, like, when I was visiting with Hollywood, I was shocked to see people coming to fist blows over a parking spot. So that tells me that, oh, we're going to need more of a police presence as well. Um, because people get very angry and fight over what little's left.
I've seen people getting fistfights over a handicap parking space.
Yeah.
Because they don't look handicapped and somebody gets mad at them. Oh, they do.
We're stressing people out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Evan, in his presentation last month, you know, did talk about the cities that are moving forward with option one, no mandates. And I think, you know, uh, there's quite a few cities that are taking that approach. Like I said, I, I can, we can come back with a map that will show the existing vacant properties here in Troutdale and what their zone. And kind of looking at that, at those impacts with for option one.
Yeah, and.
What we can do and how it could work.
And survey about the fifteen employees and see how, how that would work.
I think though, reaching, reaching out and engaging folks locally is going to be the best way to go forward because then they understand kind of what we're up against. And it's not a thing where the city did it, the council did it, you know, whoever did it. It's like, this is what we have to do. Help us come up with the best solution for the community.
And I'm working on a project page for the website that explains all of this information. That should be up in the next week and a half.
Oh, great. You guys are on it. Thank you.
You guys are all very good at your jobs. Honestly, I really appreciate you guys big time. I guess you have brought the fresh air. Appreciate it.
Yes.
I would like to mention that, um, as I was on vacation, I did visit some places that I knew in my youth. And I was actually surprised how hard it was to find. I guess maybe more. It's hard to find places that still existed, that existed there in my youth. So cities don't just develop and they're done. Cities redevelop and things get torn down and other things get built. So, you can't really actually say, we only have two more properties or whatever and we're done. No, you're never done.
Correct. You're never done, but I think, you know, staff does a great job of trying to look at this in a long-term lens, a longer-term lens than we do, of what the impact could be.
We've been lucky. We've been luckier than many cities. Have a question, Erica?
Yes.
It's covered up by those.
Let me see if I can.
Number, well, you can, I'm sure you know the answer. Number three, it's a certain number of.
Thank you, Dakota.
Does not apply to employers of a certain size?
Yes, those employers that have fifty or more employees.
Fifty?
Fifty. Five, zero.
Okay, so under option two, what I've read is you have to take two of the five, but you have to pick one of the top three. So if you had a city that didn't have any large employers, that'd be four, they'd be forced to use one, number one or number two, right?
If you didn't have, this is, I think.
If three wasn't, if three wasn't an option, you'd have to use, take one or two.
That is a good hypothetical question. And I think if I posed that to DLCD, let's just say if we didn't have any employers that had fifty or more employees, we would just come up with that program in our code. It would be the same as implementing number four, the, the tax on parking lot revenue. We don't have that, but we can implement it.
Right.
And they said it was, and, and they said that was okay. We've checked the box.
Okay.
So that makes sense.
So that, so that would work in the city, in that situation?
In that situation, I, I think so.
Okay. Uh, I also wanted to have you go back to slide, well, the first slide, I think.
Yeah. This one? Just option one? Or?
Option three.
That page.
This one.
So, this is actually, there's actually section A, and this is A, right?
Yes.
And then B has the three options. And B has the three options that are subdivided within each. Subdivided within each of the three. Uh, my question under A is, it says no parking for residential under seven fifty square feet. So, so you had an apartment complex with hundred units, fifty of which were one bedroom. Does that mean only, it'd only be required to have fifty parking spaces? It says one space per.
Yes, you are, you are correct. So if you had an apartment complex and they had fifty units, they, at, at a minimum, they would be required to have fifty parking spaces. One space per unit.
Unless they were under seven hundred and fifty.
Unless they were under seven hundred and fifty.
And then it's zero.
Then it's zero.
So, let's, for example, let's just say an apartment complex had twenty-five units that, that were less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. They would, for those twenty-five units, they would not be required to have parking. The other twenty-five units in this fifty-unit complex was over seven hundred and fifty with square feet. They were, they would be required to have one parking space. So you would have twenty-five parking spaces for a fifty unit.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
That's low.
Now you want people to be really mad about it.
If you want a parking spot moving to a bigger unit, right?
Yeah, basically.
But. But that doesn't mean that developers won't put in the parking, right?
No, but they're going to do the minimum, let me tell you. They're, they're, if they can, pay, parking costs a lot of money to put in.
If they can get more units, they're going to put more units.
I, 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 I agree with that, but I also agree with, Troutdale's on the edge of, of.
Civilization.
We're, we're on the edge of the metro and we know that everyone drives and we don't have a good public transportation system. I, I think if you're going to be a smart developer and you put in a unit, you're going to put in the parking space. Because if there's, if there isn't a parking space available, they might not be able to rent that unit.
Hypothetically, right, hypothetically, what hap, when you're required to have, let's say, the twenty-five parking, how many of those are, um, going to be required to be handicap and there will be no visitor parking? I mean, it, I, I know what you're saying and I agree that they're going to give you a parking space for each year because they're not. But if you read that, it just doesn't make sense.
I would say a couple of things. I think most people that develop properties, residential, commercial, or whatever, want them to be successful. They're going to try to do whatever they can to have them be successful. With that said, let's say you're a REIT developer, maybe out of New York, just as an example.
Oh, Jesus.
Maybe from downtown New York. And you're building a project out here in Troutdale. What's the minimum? Would be the question they would ask. And that's probably what they would do. And if, we've now said, or I should say, the state has said, well, the market's going to take care of parking. If the market was going to take care of parking effectively, we wouldn't have had all these House and Senate bills and executive orders and all these other things of parking that we have today. Because we would have left it to the market. But we were so sure that, that it wasn't going to get taken care of, that the state stepped in and made those decisions. And then now they're kind of coming back saying, well, the market's going to take care of it on the other side. Well, the market didn't take care of it on that side, you guys did, right? So now it's like, well, we did it, but what we did may have gone too far, but the market will take care of it now. Well, it's, it's kind of like, which one is it?
Um, thanks. Um, I, I think.
Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think something else I would be curious to know, um, I guess is what is, you know, any potential risk we foresee in waiting, um, you know, longer period of time towards the deadline? Uh, because we've seen that other cities in Oregon that aren't New York or West Hollywood have adopted other options, right? We're saying, I think, what Sherwood, places like that are going with option one, let the market decide. Um, you know, how much, I, I would be interested to maybe see how that pans out for. And, you know, if we have that year, maybe see kind of how that's working out as well. With also balancing that with any potential risk. I mean, you mentioned there, I mean, I don't know how much like goalposts are really moving, but there already have been changes since November, so I would hate to like wait and then all of a sudden, like, beginning of twenty twenty-five, like, eh, actually, too many people are banking on stuff that isn't, you know, isn't working out for us, so maybe we're going to have, you know, to choose three out of the five or something like that, you know? I don't know what the risk is in that, um, but yeah, I'd be interested to hear your thoughts.
So I don't think there is, I don't think there's any risk.
Okay.
And honestly, since we do have this extra year, we can develop, I mean, we can develop a, a package that we like and we can just sit on it until, until we have to adopt it.
Yeah.
Um, so we can, you know, start doing this work and getting a package of code amendments that, um, I shouldn't say that we, that we like, but.
Can deal with.
Work those.
Yeah.
Yes. And then we can look at other cities during that time too. But then we would need to go through the adoption process, like late spring of next year to meet that deadline.
What, what's the, I've asked you this before myself. What's the current default? I mean, what did you, what have you gained by getting the one-year extension? I mean, you know, the, the two, or multifamily, for example, in Troutdale, the two and a third is no longer in effect, is it?
So it is in effect. So if somebody came in and, um, wanted to put in multifamily housing, it's a clear and objective standard from the state, so we would implement it. So if somebody came in and wanted to do a, a new, a new apartment structure with fifty units, again, let's just say, the minimum parking would be, you know, fifty parking spaces. What we're gaining is this art is coming up with an approach for these three different options. That's what we really gain through this next year.
Time to engage the community.
And we're not having to mandate some of these things until next year.
The, the the clear and objective language for some of these, it's in effect now through the state. And we would be required to implement, but not all.
So I, I have, um, friends, like, I'm not the only one here. I've got friends at various levels of government and, um, none of them are really out to, to make things worse. But they're hearing testimony about it's, if you do this, it's going to be this way. And they just don't always know. And you get some unexpected consequences. When we get down to the real world, right? Um, I used to have rentals here in Oregon. I won't do it anymore. Uh, vacancy rate is low here. I've got a friend that's out there, he's still doing development, developing apartments around. And he does a fairly good job of, you know, wanting to do a good job in picking the right amount of parking. But also now I have a relative that's more of a slow lord that is going to get away with as minimum as he can. And he gets away with it because the vacancy rate is so low. He knows that people won't have an option. And that is, there's a percentage of them that are going to be living in his facility even though it's not sufficient. And he's good with that. And so, the idea that everybody's going to be responsible and you just let the market drive it, that just doesn't work. There's going to be people that do bad jobs if you don't at least have some kind of minimum standard. I, I think the fallacy is in actual practice, not in, not in what intentions are of the people who passed the law.
So we're going to try and make the best of this and be as creative as we possibly can for the benefit of our citizens. That's all we can do.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree. Make the best of it.
All right. I think I got direction from the commission this evening to kind of go forward and bring back some additional information to you, you know, in the next month or two. Thank you.
No, thank you.
So next month, come in with something that they're appealing or something. We're just going to be excited. Okay, the next one, I think I mentioned, uh, you're off the hook on use tables.
You mentioned that you would like to, uh, bring that back next.
Yeah, we've got some, um, suggestions that we'd like to make and bring them back.
For the use tables?
Yeah, for the use tables. And so we'll just do that because it'll speed the conversation up a little bit. It could be good.
Chair?
Yes.
Do you have any recommendations, uh, that we, like, that would help us, I guess, be more effective in the conversation as well? Like, I, this, this is my first time going over use tables. We had a great conversation over, um, zoning and everything like that before. Uh, I was kind of looking over them, just like the second time I was like ready to go and, you know, removed it, but like, I, you know, I, just in order to make sure that we're, like, I'm maximizing my ability here, like, what, what is the objective exactly, I guess? We're just kind of reexamining the.
This is kind of, I guess I'd call it a tune-up. As you do this, what?
No, nothing. I like that language.
You go through the code and you think, okay, we got everything figured. You go through, you go through the code and you think, okay, we got everything figured out now. And you make all these changes and it goes up to council and we print the books and everything's going along. And then all of a sudden staff's like, you know, you forgot about, you got no definition in there for school, how's that supposed to work? And then you're like, uh-oh. And you start making this list and then this definition doesn't connect with this one. And staff's like, how are we supposed to do this? And you read it and you're like, oh, that doesn't actually make any sense, does it? Sure looked good when we did it. And some things change, you know, there's a definition that was spot on and all of a sudden it just doesn't work anymore. And so you go through these and it's like, now we have these different uses, so we gotta make, we've got to adjust those. And that's really what we're trying to do.
So we're, I'm gonna interrupt. So we are looking at like the conditional permitted and not permitted uses specifically on the tables, is that where we're?
We're look, uses in the zones and then definitions, right?
And definitions?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, okay.
So what we've tried to do now is, um, and staff's done a phenomenal job with this, is creating more tables so somebody can look at it and they can go over and say, oh, can't do it or can do it versus having to read through it and figure it out. It, it's much more user-friendly than what we had. And so these are some great things, but they, staff keeps coming back and saying, now, read this. And then we figure out that it doesn't make sense, so it's our job to kind of retool it. And just to make them more effective. Again, make it easier for the, for the residents.
For example, like our definition discussion, you know, we added a couple. And, you know, uh, before we move, it's like, before we code amendment, we'll come back like, hey, this looks good, right? Uh, but for example, the ones that we added, you know, say, Jim, do you wanna add that definition? Uh, we have a definition for what Jim is, do we wanna add that Jim part to another? Or do we wanna have that be in the use table as a standalone use? I think that's also something, we've got, we added a couple.
Right.
Um, and rather than, like, obviously, we're not just gonna go, uh, on the wind, like, hey, I think it looks good here, everyone, you know, guidance.
Sure.
And so for those that we added or those that we changed, make sure that they're still kind of in the right location.
Okay.
Um, or if they need to be moved.
Okay.
So I think that's kind of, for example, Jim will probably more or less likely still be in the, uh, the, um, commercial area. Do we want that to be part of active use? As like, we need a definition for what Jim actually is, which we have now. Do we wanna add just the word Jim to the active use or passive or active type, uh, set part of the use table, or do we wanna have it be standalone? I think that's also a way to look at it as well.
Okay.
Because we have to add those, we may, I'm gonna change our definitions.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's also seeing, making sure those still work within the tables and where they're located.
Sure.
Um, and make sure, so when we do that, we'll do that under one, one full code amendment.
Great.
Um, for definitions.
That makes a lot of sense, I get, yeah. Yeah. And like, well, you start getting into it, you know, retail and personal services and some of these things, as you look through those, it's like, well, now we have this and it really doesn't seem to fit in here. So maybe we need a new definition, it needs to go someplace else. Thank you.
Also on the note of, uh, you know, doing the, the tune-up, if you ever are looking through the code and notice something isn't correct or isn't lining up, for example, uh, Mr. Wilcox emailed me the other day with a really good notice I've never noticed. But it's referencing, you know, this section references this number, but it's actually the number right after it. And it's like, that's great. Right now, we do have a, a file, um, that is, uh, the assistant planner name, bad code goes here. Uh, so that's an area that's very larger on the bus that we're adding all of these things into our file to do, uh, there's sections that are missing that we noticed. Uh, in the MECO, there's sections missing for food carts that were just scribbler errors from past code amendments. Um, that haven't been in there for what seems like quite a while. Uh, so anything that you happen to notice, shoot us an email, uh, like, you know, Mr. Wilcox did. I added that directly in there, cause that's something that we need to make that connection as well.
Sure.
Make sure that everything's reading, right? Cause it is a long document, uh, and so, uh, and right now, we currently don't have a, uh, a company that you would send off like Qcode or something like that, that does, that adds those code amendments for you, so we do it manually. And it makes some more sense of why now, I realized after I started, why things have been missed. After going through and doing a couple, we have to really make sure you go through the fine tooth comb. Uh, and unfortunately, I can't just add those back in there without going through the process again.
True.
That'd just be easier, like, add it back in or make the quick edits, I have the ability, but I have to know the code and process.
You do, and we've done cut and paste, something's going to council or going to planning commission and you think you got it all and you missed a paragraph. And then a year later, you're like, oh crap.
That's, I, we have one of those in the code now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Two.
And just, if you're ever looking through the code and you notice something, please listen. So you know all, we're in there every single day. Sometimes you just get used to the glancing right over it. So you're just scrolling for looking for what you're looking for.
Right.
For that specific, yeah.
I will say this, and this is kind of a loaded gun, but I'm gonna say it anyhow. There are some municipalities where the planning commission has a very, very limited role in code. They basically get, get brought to them and they stamp it or don't stamp it and it goes on. And they're really not fully engaged in this process that we're going through. And it's, it's more work. It seems to every once in a while be kind of a dry discussion, if not really dry. But I think it makes us all better, makes us smarter, and I think it helps staff.
Well, you throw parking in there, it gets really exciting.
Yeah.
That's about the only excitement you get out of code.
Don't forget fines.
Oh, signs, that's another one, yeah, signs.
Signs. That'll always be a thing. Okay. All right, you're up.
Oh, staff communications. So, uh, just looking out into the future here, uh, with the feedback that I got from the commission tonight, I think our next, we don't have any additional public hearings scheduled for next month, um, in May. So I think our next meeting will be the fifth meeting in June. And that will provide maybe some opportunity to gather some data and bring it back to all of you to review.
So we don't have a meeting in?
We don't need a May meeting?
Or would you like to have a May meeting and go over these code? The, the code work?
Maybe just see how-
We could do that and have a little separate-
We wanted to see how it's going in a couple of weeks and see what we think we need to do.
Yeah.
That be okay?
I can have a check-in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, well, just updating everyone, I will not be at the meeting in, uh, June. So if we do push it, that-
It's a very lame excuse why you would be missing the meeting, that's all I'm gonna say.
You know, I'm not in the meeting.
Yep, let's, let's have a check, like, let's have a check-in in two weeks. And then we can, we can set, schedule a meeting in, in May.
That be good, okay.
On another note, um, I presented this information in your, uh, forward-looking calendar. The city received a sixty thousand dollar grant from the Oregon Fire Marshal. And part of this grant is to reduce, uh, you know, yard debris or, you know, fuel for, you know, potential wildfires. And so we are working on a, uh, neighborhood community event, event in the Palis, in the Sandy Palisades neighborhood for this June. So we're gonna have a three-day yard waste event, um, for that neighborhood, for neighbors to kind of, you know, clean out the vegetation and dump it all in some free, uh, what is it? There's free large containers.
Dumpster.
Dumpsters, thank you.
I, I feel your pain sometimes, you know? It's right there, you know?
Thank you. Um, and so prior to this event too, we're going to hold like a neighborhood ice cream social, just to talk about the event and, um, fire prevention.
Now, this is down in Sandy Palisades along the creek?
Yes.
To clean up the underbrush?
And we're gonna have more information about this event, we'll be coming out in the champion and we'll be also posting, uh, information online.
Cool.
And then next year, we'll, we'll do an event in Strawberry Meadows and then the following year, the Beaver Creek subdivision.
Sweet fire?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. But we can-
Just stay.
Yeah.
It's not a lot, though. Just maybe even a quarter. Yeah, it's more for all the properties that are like, the Palisades is the main, is the main one, it's about most fire risk. Um, given how it's proximity to, um, the natural scenic area. Um, so it's primarily that area. Um, and then a couple of smaller ones. Uh, Nick is also the, he's the planner, that's been working on this one as well, so I guess we'll, TV is out this week, but we will be on-
Closer to the NSA, you mean?
So my-
What do you do with the people that are in the NSA? Make them do something.
Uh, is that you?
Make them do something.
So-
Those guys.
What, behind the college? There's a scenic area.
Oh, the large green space behind the college, right there at Stark and Troutdale Road.
I mean, that could go sideways real quick if somebody decided to do something stupid. You know, like a firework or a cigarette or whatever.
Do you remember when we had the gorgefire and we had the embers coming down?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Probably has something to do with it too.
But I noticed that in other areas, like in Utah, they clean all the underbrush in all the national parks, they clean it up and they either do a burn or they get rid of it. So there's no, nothing that burns on the ground level, it has to be at tree level before.
They pretty much done that by in college, haven't they?
No, not really. Behind the college, but not by, but not the, the commercial property or community commercial property that's there, that isn't taken care of. And it has trees on it and grass. It's never hardly ever mowed. In fact, they planted more trees in there, so I don't know.
And sometimes you see smoke a thousand acres, is that-
Yeah, that's another one.
Fuel down there? Is that, okay.
Well. No. No, I've noticed, I've called it in a few times when I walk down by the airport, there'll be, you could see fires coming down. And they go, well, since they're laid down, check it out. They never do, but you never know. I just feel better calling. I think we should do an airplane drop.
That's true.
I'm sorry.
That is so cool, those planes though.
Yeah.
Take off out of here and go over the river, have you seen that?
Oh, yeah.
That's nice and cool.
In a helicopter?
Load up and take off.
Anything else?
Nope.
The code amendment will be going to, uh, city council next month. So, uh, we have that moving along. Um, other than that, we have one other application that just came in, uh, just recently being complete uh, for a modification to, uh, the Verizon antennas on, uh, water towers. So that's just, uh, that's a type two. So that's not technically an extension of a non-conforming use, but, uh, so they're, they're just doing an upgrade uh, to what it is. They're not adding any more, they're just replacing. Uh, but since it's technically no longer a permitted use, it is random, so it's non-conforming. So that's why they have to do the non-conforming use process, uh, just, just to reinforce that and upgrade some.
I was about to ask about that.
Yep.
What, what's the status, you know, since they're putting new equipment on there? Would you have to know what their lease arrangement is with the city?
I am not sure. I'm not entirely sure. That's something I doubt about.
Okay. Are, are there more than others besides Verizon up there?
Yeah, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are up there as well.
Okay.
Cause they used the water towers prior to having a, prior to the city having a telecommunications section in our code. Uh, so that's why they used the water towers. Um, and they are trying to know from what I heard from, Marley had mentioned that I think they were trying to move, uh, like, once they all got to a point where all of them needed to replace, then had a discussion regarding the lease.
Okay.
But there wasn't anything set in stone, they're, and they weren't, they weren't told no, so uh, it was just a discussion that I think was, they were trying to kind of get towards. Um, but now that they're moving forward, there's, she said that, okay, excellent. But yeah, I'm not entirely sure about these, everything, how long that goes.
Okay, thanks. I've no idea what those look like, but they used to do those for twenty years. So they were rather lengthy.
I'm used to it, cause I can see it now. You adapt those with the little sparkly ones on.
There's some creative things you can do to where you don't even notice them, and there's other ones where it's like, hell!
Until the area gets developed and it's a central plaza, it's constantly being serviced by all the local technicians. But yeah.
Okay, well, that one by the church on Cherry Park, they were gonna make it look like a tree, weren't they? Camouflage it.
I think they did.
Yeah, it looks like a tree with a coffee can on top of it or something now, but it does not look like your typical tree, yeah.
I know California, when you go along the freeway, every once in a while, you see this green thing, and it blends in, but you know what it is, but it just looks like a tree cactus type thing.
Run those out in Harvard, that through so many years, they have to replenish its backup on it.
We're getting good cell service off of that tower you mentioned.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox.
Nothing else.
Okay.
Yep.
What else?
No, else.
You know, I was kind of hard on the DLCD, um, fellow the last time. And, uh, Jerry Stephenson, I thought you were far more diplomatic and I can learn from you.
Oh, thank you, I don't, I don't know about that.
Well, what was driving me was the, you know, the high school there is one of the largest in the state. Um, I'm over there a lot, cause my wife's a teacher. And I've learned that the student drivers, there's a lot of them that don't know where the bumpers are. And so squeezing them into a more narrow lane, extra truck traffic. Just envisioning the future on that one and just, you know. That's kind of what was driving me, it just seems dangerous. We do have, um, a bicycle lane, um, on Stark. It's a bit on the dangerous side that really actually needs some fixing up. Either needs to be made more of a, um, good bicycle lane or it needs to be removed. And then the Troutdale Road Bridge really actually needs some improvement, cause you get bicyclists on the traffic side of that and it's not good. Our road's just too busy for that kind of thing, so that needs some improvement. So if I had dollars, that's where I'd be putting them.
Yeah, there's some areas, like, I just find with the two fifty-seven thing, it's just, it's kind of interesting to me because there's been so much discussion about it and so much awareness to it. About how important it is and spray corridor and all of these things, it's like, couldn't you have filled in like maybe just ten or twenty of the potholes, you know, or something?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot.
You know, maybe, maybe do something for it?
Lot of road repair that needs to happen in the region. We're putting a concentrated amount of money, money in little spots, but not really taking care of the cobalt picture.
I saw a report the other day that Oregon is in the top ten high for red quality.
Really?
Really? From how broken are they on?
Oh, that's sad.
Glad I'm not going to other states then. My wife said, well, Mucklum County, that's not.
I did not, I did not see that study.
I, I've seen, no.
One clarification that I've-
Yes, sir.
So last time you talked about the turn lane on Stark on the Troutdale Road. The right away there. Okay, there's a short-
Okay, there's a short rightway where that arrow is. And we can just not have a full strip rightway along there in front of that very, uh, very patch there. The only known short.
Well, they have enough that they could do.
But somehow the potholes are just not part of the rightway. The rightway is, extends from there to the corner.
Okay. I, no, I appreciate, I'd just be really surprised if it's not thirty feet from center. Wouldn't you? For that road?
I don't know what the county standard is on this.
Like eighty feet?
And it's probably at least thirty feet from center. That would make sense.
I don't know. That's what they say.
No, I don't, I mean.
Does they want it there?
Well, they're probably waiting for that corner to be developed and then they'll acquire any necessary rightway and make that improvement.
I know a guy that built a grocery store years ago and he was waiting for the corner to get developed then. Okay. I had to say that. Okay, um, anything else?
No, no.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you all so much for the discussion. Thank you, staff. And, um, appreciate all of you very much and your dedication and the work that you do to prepare. Really appreciate it. Makes Troutdale a better place. So with that, I sign this out.
Oh, I, uh, I moved that re-adjourn.
Second, I second.
Okay, motion second to adjourn, all in favor, signify as an aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.